All right, good evening, everyone. It's about seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilman Underwood to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My flag is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Tonight, we actually, we have no presentations. We have no public hearings. We do have item three minutes of the previous meeting. Does someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments, any questions, or any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and reports. Councilwoman Verranti.
Yeah, I did attend the November meetings of three of the boards and commissions to which I'm the liaison. That included the library trustees, and I'll just give a couple of highlights from each of them. They did have their investment review, looking at the various funds that helped to support our Plainville Public Library. Talked about their outreach that they've been doing, about the strategic plan with community groups, including AARP, Lions, and Rotary Club, and also about the hiring process for the Assistant Director position. As I think everyone knows, we did lose Carrie Burgess. She was with the Plainville Public Library for 11 years as the Assistant Director, and just very competent and very beloved person, but she's moved on to the New Britain Public Library as the head of adult services and community outreach. So the library will be hiring a new Assistant Director. Conservation Commission, it was last Wednesday night, and one of their agenda items will also be one of our agenda items tonight, and that is the signs for the Pateroski Pond area. It's later on our agenda, and it was just to address the continuing concern, which we talked about on a number of occasions, about the importance of preserving and protecting the wildlife habitats in that area. And then Committee on Aging. This was all last week. It was busy. The craft fair was a tremendous success. They're gearing up for the 50th anniversary celebrations in the spring, planning the capital improvement items that they'll be discussing with the town manager for the budget preparation. They're also going to be planning a survey, somewhat similar to what the public library did, to get a lot of public input on what people think are priorities for resources and services. Veterans Lunch last Thursday, November 14th, I was able to attend and volunteer. It was a great success. The room was full. It was a wonderful event.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with an announcement or a report?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
I have a couple. So first, I don't believe at the last meeting anyone mentioned it, but I just wanted to say that the Plainville Pumpkin Fest was in October. It was well-attended, and I just want to say thank you to everyone that volunteers their time. It is a great event, well-attended, and is very nice. So thank you to all who have done that. For Chamber News, we've had many ribbon cuttings in Plainville the past month, and there is another one happening in December. So on December 12th, Brightlight Diner, which is at 33 East Street, will be having their ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m. And on December 11th, the Chamber Holiday Party is happening at the Doubletree in Hilton from 5:00 to 8:00. And the small business that will be recognized for Plainville this year will be My Moki Donut. So I'm looking forward to attending that. And, I need my readers. Small print. So RDS Media has joined the Central Connecticut Chambers of Commerce, and Roger Dietz is excited to announce the launch of his latest high-end publication, Plainville Magazine. It's going to be delivered free to every home and business in Plainville. He is going to be doing five issues annually, one for each season, plus a special holiday edition. So it's a great opportunity for businesses to advertise, and really, anyone can advertise in it, but it's just a nice way that it's going to be delivered free to everyone's home. So if you're not like on social media, you'll get some information. So I'm excited for that. So if any businesses want to advertise, you can reach out to Roger Dietz at 860-681-4943, or you can go on the Chambers website, and there's more information. And that's it.
What was the date for the ribbon cutting for Brightlight?
December 12th. It's a Thursday at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you, Quinn.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Anyone else with an announcement or a report? All right, hearing nothing, we'll move right to item five, appointments and resignations.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Harold Russ Huntley as a reserve officer effective November 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to go with Councilman Hurley, if that's okay.
Motion to appoint Damon Retsch.
Ruiz.
Rutz?
Ruiz.
Say that.
Ruiz.
Ruiz. 49 Wilton Road, Bristol, as a provisionary firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to reappoint to the Aviation Commission Mark DiPuccio for expiring October 31st, 2027. Renato Astolfi, October 31st, expiring October 31st, 2027, and acknowledge Dominic Machini's request to not be reappointed to Aviation Commission.
Second. Second that.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments or reappointments this evening?
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to reappoint Mark Romanow to Economic Development Agency for the term expiring November 9th, 2026. Motion to reappoint Mark Chase to Economic Development Agency for the term expiring November 9th, 2026, and motion to reappoint Nancy Anne Atunow to Economic Development Agency for the term ending November 9th, 2028.
Second.
All right, a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments or reappointments this evening? All right, we, no Board of Ed liaison tonight. We now move to item seven, report of the town attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few matters this evening. First of all, I was not able to have office hours today. I'm going to have office hours tomorrow. I'll be here at 10:00 till sometime in the afternoon, depending on how much business we have. Second of all, I had talked to the Assistant Town Manager about doing some training for the various members of the board and commissions that we have in town, and I just wanted to bring that up. I do three different topics, and I could do them separately or all together if there's interest in doing it. And what I usually do is I do FOI training, Freedom of Information. I do how to be an effective member of a board or commission, and then I like to go through if people have interested ethics presentation on, you know, for the different offices, et cetera. So I'm happy to do that. We would want to do, you know, one or two sessions, depending on what people wanted to attend. We like to have one during the day, if possible, and then one in the evening for other, you know, members of boards and commissions. So I just bring that to your attention. That's something that we're planning on doing. I'll coordinate that with the Assistant Town Manager. And the last thing is, you know, we were appointed last December, so we've had some opportunity now to be the town attorneys for Plainville, and there were a number of matters that came up during the past year. And one of, as a result of that, I took a look at the town charter with a fresh set of eyes with regard to potential issues that arose during this past year. In particular, the Chapter Four, Section One, the tenure, the residency requirement. And I wanted to bring this up during the negotiations that we had with the manager over the past year, and we ended up amending the contract. There were a number of issues that came up as we were going through that, and also with regard to my legal research. And in my view, I think that the current language of the charter now, with regard to the residency requirement, using the term tenure, that is not a very workable, it's not a workable provision as envisioned when it was first adopted. You've got the tenure and you have residency. So you've got two terms that are relatively vague. Tenure is any time that they're the manager, and residency is an apartment, you know, so domicile or principal residence is different. And so whatever the intent was when this was passed, I think that at the present time with regard to those two things, that it should be revisited because going into the future, not in the present time, but going into the future, in particular next year, those could become issues, and even going further with regard to trying to appoint managers in the future. Because once you amend the charter, if you have revision, then it's going to stay that way. And with the, I don't know what the past advice was, however, one of the things that I would say is that with the present language that's used, it's very difficult. You have to have a contract. In other words, with the language in the charter, you cannot just rely on an appointment and a vote. You're going to have to have a contract to kind of define the obligations, all right? And so by having a contract, you're not going to have the consistent decision as to what tenure means. Because as different councils are elected, you're going to have a different view of what that word means, what the contract provision should be. So even though you have a charter provision, and it's supposed to be binding, et cetera, the one that you currently have doesn't work, in my opinion, and it won't do what you expect it to do without undue claims and potential litigation. As well as, I, in my view, from having been a town attorney for a long time, and having gone through the hiring, I think of three or four managers in other towns besides Plainville. The issue of finding qualified candidates is always difficult, and these types of provisions, especially as I've described to you, I think that the term is vague, it's ambiguous. I don't think that it does what it was meant to do when it was originally passed. I think it's subject to different interpretations by different councils. I think that it's something that's worth revisiting, and I think that to do it now would be a good time to do it, because next year is a national, is a statewide election, and there would be a minimal cost of getting it on the ballot if you were, wanted to get it on a November ballot. So that was the first thing. There were a couple other items that I looked at as I was looking through the charter that I thought would be worth exploring also. Once again, it would be up to the council to decide if they want to go that route and decide the different, you know, the charge that they would give to the commission. But I thought some of the other things that might be worth looking at would be, one of the things would be the idea of stipends for the people that are volunteering an enormous amount of time, and I know that, in my view, from having served other towns, that the people who are volunteering are never going to say that they should be reimbursed to get expenses. It's not a popular thing to say. But I do think that it's a very fair thing to do at times, and I think that you'll attract qualified, you know, you already have qualified candidates, but I think that it's a shame when somebody who would be qualified feels that they can't serve because of financial constraints. So I think that's something that you might want to consider also. And the last thing, once again, with regard to the economics of all this, I've always been surprised, as a town attorney, that we have elections every two years. And so I just think it's really difficult to have a continuity of representation at the local level where you are doing the nuts and bolts of your town. You know, you're going to make sure that the garbage gets picked up, et cetera, and you're taking care of your roads with that short a term, and I know some towns have gone to four years, and that's something else I think you should take a look at. So those would all be recommendations that I would recommend that you look at, you know, as the town attorney. I do feel a certain obligation to give you my advice, especially with regard to the very first issue with regard to tenure. I think that going forward, that there is a great potential for, I think, you know, inconsistent application of that section, depending on who's, happens to have the majority at the time, as well as regardless of that, but the views that people may have with regard to tenure and the amount of time and the residency requirements. So as it's currently written, while I do understand the purpose of it, I do understand why the public supported it, I don't know that what they voted for is actually what they got with the way it's written, so I would suggest that you revisit it. That's my report. Anybody have any questions?
All right, we'll open it up to any comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, so we just can't randomly go and change the charter, and it was voted on two years ago, and two-thirds of the citizens said that they wanted to uphold that part of the charter regarding residency. So I don't think how each individual council member or each, each different council every two years thinks about the wording of this part of the charter or thinks, I mean, we, we were surprised by the vote. We were hoping that it would get passed so that we could, we could change that and have a town manager not have to live here, you know, in order for us to hire them. So we were surprised at the emotion and the adamacy of the townspeople, but they were, two-thirds of the vote, 66% actually, voted for to have him live in town, and it's been over two years now. And still, nothing, except that your interpretation of the charter thinks it's, the wording is loosey-goosey. And I don't know. So I, I'm in disagreement, however.
Well, I, can I just, are you all set?
Yeah.
I think, but I think, to clarify, I don't think you're saying get rid of the residency requirement.
I'm not.
You're just saying the way it's written right now.
What I'm saying, well, right, let me be clear, because this is something that we just, you know, I'm raising now, and I didn't really give a lot of notice with regard to this. So I don't know what the charge was specifically. I did review the charter revision timeline and the report, et cetera, from last time. So I don't know specifically what the charge was to the Charter Revision Commission at that time, and what the question was. It seems to me that at that time, there was a great concern with eliminating it completely, and then during the course of the deliberations, the final question was a question of waiver. However, during the course of the year, it seemed as if the debate was going back and forth. It didn't seem to me that the real issues here that I see legally, it's got nothing to do with policy whatsoever. I understand that. Legally, I think, in my opinion, that it would be difficult to enforce that tenure provision. I think that it's not, you're not going to get a consistent application. You're going to have to have contracts. Every contract could be different. Tenure's two years, one council tenure's a year for another one, and maybe it's four years for another one, because it's not defined. It just says tenure. And also, the residency, if you wanted to make it really so that you can't just rent an apartment to satisfy it, then you'd have domicile or principal residence. So I'm not suggesting a result. What I'm telling you is, the way it is presently worded, it doesn't work for what you want to do. I don't know what the argument was last time. I wasn't the attorney last time. I didn't give advice last time. This is my advice now, as your town attorney. Now, and I, with all due respect, I understand, I don't look at it, I look at it as, what can we expect going forward? To have a clear standard going forward, that's how I look at it, and that's why I'm bringing this. But that's just my advice. It's up to the council to decide what to do.
Okay.
I just wanted to explain the grounds for it.
So basically, a rewrite of the way the charter, you, you think that the charter should be rewritten to be clearer, and also adopt a contract, a need for a contract on top of?
You would not have to have a contract if it was clearer, because now you need a contract. So what happens is, when you have the word tenure there, right? So if I'm going to be, if I was in a position of having to reach a contract with the town manager in the future, let's say, right? I would want to define what that word means. Does it mean a year? Does it mean two years? In other words, what are the conditions? It can't just mean as long as you're the town manager, that's your tenure, and so if they get a notice that there's been a breach, because you have to go through a notice to cure the breach, right? You give them the notice, they move in, they get a residence, they've cured the breach, there's no longer, they're in compliance with the charter. I don't think that was the intent of how it should work when the thing was passed. I, that's what I'm, that's all I'm saying.
To me, the definition of tenure is from the beginning till the end. So it's the entirety, it's not just a year.
It's not, because the charter says, it doesn't say that. With all due respect, Councilwoman Tompkins, the charter specifically says, you don't have to be a resident at the beginning. It specifically says it. If, that's what it says.
At the beginning.
At the beginning. So it's not the whole time. It's tenure, whatever it means.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I just, you know, just to add a couple thoughts. I mean, I don't think the intent of the charter was to rely on the contract to define that particular section of the charter, and I think that's where we're finding after going through the process we did the last year with the, you know, amendment to the contract. You know, I certainly have my personal feelings on that particular item in the charter, but I think what I'm hearing is at least, the way it's written now, we do need to put some definition, or there needs to be some adjustment made with the language the way it's written now for us to clarify and not rely on contracts to define what we're trying to do.
And I don't know that, the way the charter is written now, that a contract is an effective way to even do it. It would be the only choice, but typically, you know, the charters are, the contract has to be consistent with the charter. It can't overrule the charter. The charter rules. So that would be another issue as you're trying to draft a contract here, because I'm looking forward, I'm not looking backwards here. I mean, one of the things that occurred, I think that we, the issues that we had, that we have resolved those, and see what the future holds. But if, you know, this is the charter, and as a result of the experience of going through this, we had substantial public comment, and I understand, you know, everyone's position, but as a result of all that, I think that it's something that should be revisited. It doesn't seem to be a settled question on a lot of grounds, but I don't do policy, I only do the legal, and that's my legal opinion.
All right, anyone else with a question or a comment?
You know, I guess I'll just leave it, you know, I would hope everyone would consider what was said tonight, the recommendation from the town attorney, and certainly at our next meeting, it will be in the, you know, we'll certainly talk about it more at the next meeting, so you have a couple weeks to think about it.
Yeah, we're available, should anyone, any of the councils, so first of all, I do have office hours, and I encourage you to drop in and see me if you'd like. I have no problem with that whatsoever while I'm here. And also, if you want to contact me directly by email, I have no problem with that either. I'm more than happy to communicate with anybody who asks questions on this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we can move to item number eight, report of the town manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I have a few items here. It is about eight items, and then I'll hand off to Andy for the, for the happenings, which I know you're all waiting for. But part of that, tonight's meeting also includes the financial dashboard, which, in a nutshell, looks fine, but we'll get to that. Excuse me. My first item is ARPA discussion, so that I want to let the council know that we are approaching or nearing the first deadline for ARPA, which is December 31st, 2024, for spending down Plainville's allocation of $5,189,197. So the town is required to have all funds obligated by the end of the year, and so here's the thing I wanted to bring to your attention. By definition, the town needs to not only set the public hearing and approve the project funds, as we have been doing, but we need to have the funds obligated, and by definition from the state, they want to see a purchase order in hand. So that sort of, that detail, I think, was, was lost in, in the process in terms of, if we obligate through a public hearing and identify and, and reserve and allocate, the state wants, or feds want to see otherwise in terms of obligation. So we are on track to do that, and we'll go through, you know, the last few items I have here are three items for consideration as recommended by the ARPA Planning Committee. It's those that are on the list, which is the fire department radios, municipal center furniture improvements, and the former white oak property. So those are the remaining items that will obligate the remainder of the funds, and so thus, we need to set a public hearing for Monday, December 2nd, 2024, and that's an item under new business for you to do so. I'll pause there, if there are any, any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so do you have it written anywhere what you mean by former white oak property? And how much funds for that?
Yeah, the, there was a notation here on, on this, you should all have, I think, this page as well, but the detail around that was for about $100,000 for traffic study, whether the state was going to require, I think it was a placeholder for a state requiring a traffic study, and I don't believe that's the case anymore. That's what, that's the information we have back at this point, so those funds can be reallocated and will, our, the recommendation would be to be allocated back up to the fire department radios.
That traffic study's not covered by the developer? Because in the past, when we've had developments, the developer's the one that pays for the traffic study to be done.
Right. Apparently, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that, that's how you came about this, that the town, the town promised to do that study in lieu of the developer.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe that was money set aside for a traffic light that may, may or may not have had to have been installed, and it wasn't actually a traffic, it was a traffic study and a traffic light that may or may not have to have been installed, so it was just kind of a placeholder, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
Which are expensive.
Yeah.
Anytime you undertake that. So yeah, so the, those, those remaining items would be set under new business for a public hearing on Monday, December 2nd, to approve those, and then we get those, all of those remaining items obligated via purchase order by December 31st deadline. Then we'll have two years to actually spend down those funds. Item two, if there are no other questions, item two, review of Chapter 374, Article One, the all-night parking ban. So this initial review for the winter parking ban is a complete, I don't know that there's any more research we need to do. We've looked at a bunch of different towns and come up with samples there, and this is something we kicked around for, for a while back earlier in the spring after, after the last season. But Section 374, Article One, of the Town of Plainville Code outlines the rules and regulations for an all-night parking ban that is effective annually from December 1st to April 1st during the hours of 12:00 midnight to 6:00 a.m. So its purpose is to keep the roadways clear of vehicles during the winter months where snow plowing and removal operations are most, are expected. However, the, as we found, the ban may in some cases provide a hardship for owners that have no off-street parking. So proposed language in the amendment has been provided, that we're looking at other, other communities in which they have more flexibility in adopting language like Farmington's that allow you to call on a case, or storm-by-storm basis, a parking ban when there is a weather-related event versus a December to April total ban on, on parking. So there's also an item under new business to set a public hearing date, obviously because this is, this is an ordinance that needs a public hearing process, so we've combined the ARPA and parking ban for Monday, December 2nd, to discuss potential or possible amendments to the ordinance.
All right, any questions regarding that?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if you could just quickly, you know, recap the methods
Yeah, if you could just quickly, uh, you know, recap the methods of notification that will be used, and I'm sure you'll do that, you know, at the beginning of the hearing on December 2nd as well.
Yeah, good question, yeah. Um, we have, now have the ability to do, uh, in addition to our social media, our website, our social media will have Code Red, which will be available, uh, to us as well. Um, so those, um, three main items would be at our disposable, at our disposal to use.
Okay, good, thank you.
And just for those that may not know, what is Code Red?
Code Red is a, is a program by which you can opt in to get, uh, announcements and receive messages, text message, phone messages on your cell phone for related items that, that come up in town. Um, you know, again, you, sometimes, something like the, uh, almost like the Amber Alert focused, uh, to, to the community. So, uh, anything of public safety concern, we can do that. Or anything in the public interest that we feel is important to inform, then we can use this. So it's a, sort of a reverse, uh, you know, call system. So they, you know, you get blasted out and it'll come to your, whatever phone you designate, cell phone number.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Message, uh, for you, Michael. The last nine 11 that went out, I didn't get notified.
Okay.
I guess my number wasn't in. Can you explain to the public what they have to do to be on the nine 11 call?
Yeah, I think you can simply go to our website and at the bo-, or near the bottom is the icon of, I think a red and black icon for, um, uh, the code. Uh, and you can simply hit that, that link, uh, Code Red link, and it should take you in and prompt you for what you need to do. And if, and I guess the fallback would be if it, if there's any glitches in there, give my office a call and we'll try to walk you through it.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, we're up to item three.
Item three, just a quick and brief update on the middle school project. Um, the renovate-like new middle school project is moving along. The next step is to prepare an RFQ slash P, which is Request for Qualifications and Proposal for a Construction Manager at Risk, or otherwise known as a CMR. Um, the architectural firm KBA, Castle Booze Associates, attended the last meeting to review their schedule and answer questions to the committee. Uh, they also confirmed that bringing on a CMR as early as possible will help in estimating costs and sourcing materials. So, um, the next meeting, uh, is scheduled for Monday, November 25th, and we're hoping to have those documents ready for the committee to then advance those out, likely, um, a, a certain period of time, a reasonable period of time for responses, I think for, four weeks, correct, yeah, four weeks minimum to do that. Um, there is some guidance that we get from the state with respect to how we go through this process for both the architect and the, uh, CMR. So that is moving along and it was good to have them at the meeting. I think it was helpful for the committee members, uh, to have that dialogue with, uh, KBA. So very helpful. Any questions?
All right, next.
Item four, uh, trash and recycle, uh, containers bid. Uh, so the town provides curbside trash and recycling collection and disposable services to eligible residential properties. Those properties receive one trash and one recycling container per unit from the Buildings and Grounds Department. Uh, in effort to continue to provide the service, the Buildings and Grounds Department is requesting the purchase of 405 95-gallon gray containers for trash and 144 95-gallon Navy containers for recycling for Schaefer Plastics North America LLC, uh, for $34,663.55. Uh, Schaefer is the sole, uh, source provider of this equipment. They've been the current sup-, they are the current supplier and have been supplying containers for the past, uh, several years. Um, so I'm recommending that the town council waive the competitive procurement process and award bid 2025-13 Trash and Recycling Containers to Schaefer Plastics North America LLC of Charlotte, North Carolina in the amount of $33,644, excuse me. Uh, and this project is funded through the recycling line item of, uh, the town general government budget. Uh, there is an item under new business to award bid 2025-13 Trash and Recycling Containers to Schaefer Plastics, uh, North America, Charlotte, in the amount of $34,664. So happy to answer any questions on that.
Everyone good?
And, you know, it, it's, it's mainly inventory. Uh, so as you can imagine, they, these barrels, containers are out, take a beating and they break parts like anything else. A lid can go, a tire, you know, a wheel can go and, and so forth. So we're down on, um, in, in terms of our inventory and we need to replenish that.
Do we, do we know about, on average, how many we replace a year?
Great question, I don't have that.
No, I was just curious, like, you know, if you, someone has it, I'm just curious to know.
Um, I don't have an average off the top of my head. I can say that we recently purchased barrels from Schaefer last year. We purchased them in the same amount. Uh, we're running low, so we nearly replaced another 400 in the last year. A lot of that is because these bins were handed out about a decade ago when we started the program. They're all coming to their, end of their use of life and they're fragile, they're breaking, um, so.
Mine's got a big.
My estimate would be about, uh, 400.
I'm getting close to needing another one. I just put some duct tape on it, it worked.
It's always a solution too.
My grandfather would be very proud. Duct tape solves everything. Thank you. Uh, anyone else with any questions or comments? All right, number five.
Number five is another bid. This is for the, uh, Water Pollution Control forklift. Uh, Water Pollution Control is requesting a new forklift to replace the current one, which is now considered unsafe and has been taken out of service. The outgoing forklift, uh, has several unreparable issues, including motor oil leaks, a faulty, uh, water pump, cracked radiator, muffler problems. Um, the equipment is essential for moving items and materials within the plant facility, so it's important for them, um, to get that replaced. And recommending the council award bid 2025-14, um, WPC forklift to Summit Handling Systems, Inc. of North Haven, Connecticut, under the Sourcewell Contract, 091520, uh, dash DIV in the amount of $27,790. And there is an item under new business to award this bid.
All right, any questions?
Just, just, uh, wanted to point out that's going to be funded, uh, through the WPCA operating and capital funds, correct?
Great question, yes, correct, yep.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready for number six.
All right, number six is the, uh, update on the naming committee, the Sisson Memorial Request. Uh, the naming rights committee met on October 23rd uh, to consider the Recreation Advisory Board's request to name the pavilion adjacent to the Elizabeth Burner Pool at Norton Park in honor of Mary Sisson. After thorough discussion and research, including the review of similar past requests and alternate options for honoring Ms. Sisson, the committee reached the following conclusions. That the committee recognized Mary Sisson's valuable contributions to the community. However, based on information and research available, the committee determined that these contributions do not substantiate naming a public building or structure after her. Uh, the committee voted unanimously to deny the request to name the pavilion after, uh, Ms. Sisson, and there is an item under new business with that recommendation. I, I, I don't have any further details, I did not attend, uh, the, the meeting, so. Uh, but if there are questions.
Well, I just, just a comment, I know we kind of talked a little bit about this and now it's been a few months, but, you know, I think, it might have been Councilman Underwood, you know, maybe a plaque or something at the facility where we can recognize, where we put people's name on a plaque as opposed to naming individual buildings. I, I, you know, if that's something the council thinks is a good idea, I would, you know, as opposed to try, you know, naming a building, but certainly recognizing contributions that deserve to be recognized, but maybe a plaque at the pool itself. And, you know, that's one avenue I think we can, you know, be able to recognize people because, uh, to me, it's, that would be a reasonable way to handle it.
Sure.
Going forward, but I don't know who, my guess is that might fall on Andy's office.
We can do that, we can pursue that if that's the general consensus. And I think that would, might be a, um, certainly an appropriate way to recognize the valuable contributions uh, short of naming a, a building after or a structure. So I, I don't, I'm not sure, but we can talk offline if there's other precedent.
I just wanted to throw that out there before we got off the subject.
We can pursue that.
Okay. Uh, number seven, signage.
Yes, uh, this is for Pater, uh, Pateroski Park Pond signage. Um, so Mark has been very helpful, uh, in, in talking with the Conservation, uh, Commission and membership, is eager to take action. Uh, the commission is concerned about littering and disregard for the rules with respect to Pateroski Park Pond, and thus feels that such, uh, disregard has led to the loss of wildlife and infringement and impairment to the park's habitat. Uh, since enforcement is difficult, the commission has asked Mark DeVoe to design a sign that can be posted at several points of entry to remind visitors that they are in a location that places restrictions on their behavior. A small map has been included in, in your packet, uh, for review, which illustrates, uh, potential locations of where those signs would be placed. The commission respectfully requests permission to label the pond as a wildlife management area, and it is with, uh, the renaming, uh, that the, the commission members hope to bring about an awareness, uh, that they are sharing the resource not only with other visitors, but with all of the wildlife that make the, the pond their home. Uh, the town council has approved funding for this very purpose in the current budget for the Conservation Commission, and they are respectfully requesting permission to proceed, uh, with the current draft, uh, design. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
This item is also under new business for your consideration.
All right. We're ready for a financial dashboard.
All right, as I mentioned, um, nothing alarming at all. Uh, everything looks, you know, good so, thus far. Um, the, uh, starting with the total town expenditures, uh, through October 31st, I've expended $26,1162. Uh, that represents 36.13% uh, below the two-year average of 38.98, almost 39%. So again, if you recall, uh, it's the same, uh, explanation uh, with the respect that the, uh, general, uh, obligation funds in terms of bond payments coming off the books. So, um, that, that happened, uh, previous to, to the October, before the September. And so these numbers are, um, under what would be the two-year average because of those maturity of bonds. So the general government, um, is at 38% spent compared to the two-year average of 47 because they're in the general government side. Um, the, uh, Board of Education expenditure looks closely aligned with the two-year average. Uh, they have spent, uh, just over the two-year average. Their percentage spent is 34.76% expended. The two-year average is 33.81%, so slightly above their two-year average. Uh, moving on to, uh, the, um, police, uh, dispatch overtime expenditures. Um, through October 31st, they have spent 209,435 on just the police overtime, uh, budget. Nothing expended on the dispatch. Um, the two-year average is 181,000, uh, so they're running over, uh, by 28,000. Um, reflective of the fact that they've had, uh, the retirements, they've had, uh, other positions that, um, are, um, whether illness or, uh, workers' comp and things of that nature. So, um, I'm talking with the chief, there are a number of candidates, uh, in, in the academy, more going to the academy, uh, and doing the best he can to, you know, manage the, the overtime at this point. So hopefully that'll, that'll come back. Uh, but it does take a long time for, uh, candidates to get through the academy and to get through field training. So keep our fingers crossed there, uh, that that'll level out, um, before the end of the year. Um, the, uh, roadways overtime, um, their, uh, expenditure through October 31st, 12,966. Their two-year average is 9,181. So they're also running, um, higher than the two-year average by $3,785. Uh, and we'll take a look at, um, that, but that, that is, you know, again, seasonal type of issues that, that come into play. Um, building and grounds, uh, also, um, well over their two-year average. And as I noted before, that's attributed to the early, uh, fiscal year event with the balloon festival in August. So that, that pushed that, um, up right away in the beginning of the fiscal year. On the, uh, tonnage for, um, solid waste, we have, uh, at this point, uh, gone through, uh, 2,127 tons. Uh, and so we're running, uh, about 100 tons over the two-year average of 2,027 tons. So, uh, again, I can't really explain, uh, you know, why we did talk, I talked about this last month, but, uh, could be just that the, uh, recycling is, um, is running under and maybe there's been a shift from, uh, from recycling, uh, to, uh, solid waste. Uh, but we'll have to, I'll have to dig a little bit, no pun intended, dig a little deeper into that and, uh, see what we have, uh, going on there. If possible, to find out within the industry where the, where that shift is going, if that lines up with other communities and what they're experiencing. But I think it's ju-, it's int-, it's not alarming. I mean, it just, it happens that we, we sometimes move above and beyond. Like, I remember last year, we were running the other way where a solid waste, uh, tonnage was running under and, uh, recycling was running over. So hard to pinpoint, but, uh, very difficult industry to get a hold of, get a feel for anyway. Um, so that is the, um, the special accounts there. Uh, next is revenues. Revenues are running in line. Uh, to date, we have collected, uh, $36,692,675. Our percentage received is 50.97%. Uh, and the two-year average is 51.02, so running right in line there. Uh, current taxes received, $32,128,831, 59.1% received. Two-year average is 59.2%, so running right in line. Our general fund, unassigned fund balance, those numbers have not changed. There's an audited at, uh, $11,304,584 for 15.7%. Um, looking at the estimated fund balance, uh, would be, uh, for 630, 2025, we estimate, uh, at $9,880,84 and remaining at 13.72%. So still very healthy fund balance projected at this point. So again, until we actually get the audited numbers. And then on to, uh, special revenue funds. Uh, recreation, uh, spent expenditures first, expenditures through October 31st, 147,438. Um, that is slightly above the two-year average. They've spent, uh, 49.8% and, uh, above the two-year average of 46.09%. On the revenue side, uh, their budget is 226,000. They've received 63,185. So their, uh, revenue is 27.96% received, uh, as under their two-year average of 33.96%. And again, I think there's some timing issues there with, with the amount of, uh, revenue that comes in uh, for those programs and not quite seeing the full, um, I guess, uh, full, I guess, programmatic in, or programmatic increase pre-COVID. So, um, I've got to do a little bit more work there to probe the numbers with, uh, Finance and Rec on where they think this is going to shake out, uh, from, you know, from the pre-COVID years back to, sort of, hopefully back to normal where they'll, they'll match up. Um, Robertson Airport, uh, everything moving along there. Uh, there was a significant, uh, revenue, uh, that came in, 242,772 on the revenue side under grants, and that was for the, uh, fencing. Most of it was, uh, fencing, 186 of it was the fencing. There were some other items in there as well, so that boosted, um, their revenue received, uh, to 340,272. Uh, on the expenditure side, uh, 76,252. So, um, Robertson Airport is, is obviously, um, dependent on those funds from FAA. And, um, we track those and, um, good to see that we got the, uh, the funding in on, on the fence. Uh, water pollution control, no real issues there either. Um, they're running slightly above, uh, on expenditures at 61%, 61.59%. Two-year average is 58. Two-year average is 58. But on the revenue side, they're running much higher there as well. Collected $850,048 for 19.16% of their budget in terms of revenue, and then two-year average is 8.52%. So again, timing of revenue versus expenditures and the billing that they send out and so forth. So it's not out of whack with year over year when you look at that. And the library fund, the same. It's slightly higher in expenditures and slightly higher in revenues as well, based a lot on the, you know, timing of investments and the endowments that the library does. But this obviously, as we'll see, we go through the fiscal year, that everything comes into line as we move further on into the fiscal year. Again, nothing alarming there. We're tracking that and just keeping our fingers crossed. The better we do with endowments, the better the fund does. And the last page is the major projects report. You know, Honor Heights has pretty much wrapped up, and that I don't think there's anything changed from the last report I gave last month. The turf, high school turf fund, pretty much the same as well. There's a project fund balance of $277,222 there. And again, that's one of those long-term sinking funds that we'll address when the time comes for eventual replacement for the turf. ARPA dollars I mentioned, and we'll go to a public hearing on that. Whiting Street project also is finished up for the season, and will have to go back in next spring to do the final paving on that. And road bond project, again, up for consideration as we come to the end of that. Consideration in terms of another potential issuance for a bond on a five-year, like the last five-year program. It would be something we could handle with a retreat, I think is going to be our goal to discuss capital improvements and bonding. And that's it.
All right. Any other questions or comments related to the town manager's report? All right, then, Assistant Town Manager, we're ready for happenings.
Wonderful. Well, let me start off the happenings with something that shouldn't be happening, which is the temporary town ban on open burning. It's still in effect due to the drought conditions and the extremely high fire danger. So this includes burning yard debris, charcoal grilling, campfires, bonfires, things like that. There's still a ban in effect until further notice. We have a banner at the top of our website, so if people are curious, that will go away when the ban is gone, but otherwise, we're trying to continue to post stuff on social media, and it's there on the website. But I know the fire company and department have been called out numerous times over this past weekend due to open burning issues. Citations have been issued as well, so just a reminder to make sure that's not happening. All right. On the transfer station, the town's transfer station on Granger Lane will close for the winter season on Saturday, December 7th. It will reopen at the end of December and early January solely for the disposal of Christmas trees. Otherwise, it'll open for full operation in the spring. The Social Services Department has a couple announcements. The Salvation Army bell ringing is set to roll out at Nazo's on December 5th, and the police will be holding a Stuff a Cruiser event on December 7th. Hazardous Household Waste Collection will be on November 23rd at the Vincent P. Kelly Road Bristol Public Works Facility. That's at 95 Vincent P. Kelly Road in Bristol. It is from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All Plainville residents can participate. For more information and for a list of acceptable items, you can go to the town website. We'll also be posting some information on social media. The fire company will have a Christmas tree sale at the Firehouse starting on Friday, November 29th, and ending on Sunday, December 8th. Trees are $75 each, and you can visit the fire company's Facebook page for their hours and for more information. The fire company will also be hosting their annual breakfast with Santa on Sunday, December 8th, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Firehouse. More information is on their Facebook page if you're interested in attending. And finally, from the Senior Center, and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728, and all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first is the Gallery of Trees at the Canton Historical Society. This is on Wednesday, November 20th, from 11:00 AM to 5:30 PM. The cost is $8 for transportation, and visitors will be able to travel from the Plainville Municipal Center at 11:00 AM to Canton to view over 100 decorated Christmas trees. You could walk around, there's a museum, and some shopping opportunities as well, and then there will be lunch at a restaurant in town. The Grub Club will be meeting on Thursday, November 21st, from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM. The cost is $8 for transportation. Participants will enjoy lunch in Middletown and dessert as well, and you will meet at the Senior Center at 11:30 AM on the 21st. There is a Rocky Neck hike at Rocky Neck State Park on Friday, November 22nd at 9:30 AM. The cost is $10 for transportation. The group will also have lunch at Charlie's Place Restaurant and Lounge, and the group will leave from the Senior Center if you're interested in attending. And the last thing I have here is the Thanksgiving Dinner at the Senior Center on Thursday, November 28th at 12:00 PM. It's open to Senior Center members only and any Plainville resident 60 years of age or older who will be alone on Thanksgiving Day. There are no meals-to-go options, but if you are homebound and you'd like dinner delivered to your home, you can call the Senior Center and they can make arrangements for that. There is no charge for this, but donations are greatly appreciated, and I know the Senior Center gets a lot of participants for this, and it's always a well-received event. And that is all I have for the happenings.
All right. Thank you very much. Once again, any other comments or questions before we move forward to public comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to request a five-minute recess.
All right. Someone want to second that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll be back in five minutes. Couple of quick updates.
Yeah, I would like to say that we finished bulk pickup that ended October 28th and started leaf pickup. And so I just wanted to give a quick rundown on the leaf operation, which is underway, been underway for almost, well, two and a half, almost three weeks now. And they're in Area 4 and through the second round throughout town. But as you can imagine, this is always weather-dependent, and this year, the trucks and equipment are, you know, are having some difficulty because of the dry season, and the vacuums are designed to vacuum, you know, leaves at a very high rate of air volume and discharge excess air through the top of the container. And I did have a manager's minute today to kind of try and highlight that, that some of the conditions they're in. So unfortunately, what it does is it challenges the trucks and equipments, and sometimes they overheat, and right? And so that creates another problem because of the, you know, tinderbox, you know, the high warning we have for fires. So they have to, from time to time, shut down and cool down, so it has a delaying effect in some cases. It's not always the case, but they are moving along as quickly as they can, and obviously, you know, they're not, you know, they're apologizing essentially for, you know, all of the fine debris that's left in there because that's what they're doing. But just some quick numbers. 195 loads of leaves equalling about 3,900 cubic yards to date, but that was as of last week, and so they moved through. And just to put it into comparison, so as of November, these were numbers that are almost identical in terms of as of, this was November 12th of this year, we had 3,900 cubic yards, 195 loads. Last year in 2023, they were on Round 2 and Area 3 and had collected 172 loads equalling 3,440 cubic yards. In November 12th, 2022, two years ago, they were on Round 1, still in Round 1, Area 9, and had collected 211 loads of leaves equalling about 4,220 cubic yards. So, you know, it's right in. So we're asking people to just be patient, we'll get there, you know, doing their best that they can in terms of getting to each neighborhood and making multiple passes. And we have a listing on our website that you can check, the various districts or areas, nine of them, and the neighborhoods and so forth. And we're going to try to introduce something a little bit different in terms of updating that to let you know where the crews are headed, just to give additional information that might be helpful from a timing standpoint. So we'll work on that, and just one, I thought it'd be helpful to pass that along.
All right. Thank you.
That was it.
Any questions, comments? All right. So now we'll move to Item 9, Public Comment. At this point in the meeting, anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. You'll hear a ring, that means you have 30 seconds left. When you hear the second ring, your time is run out. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council this evening? Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. First of all, I want to strongly suggest to this town council, you reject everything that the town attorney suggested. This charter has been in effect since 1958 or '59, has worked fine since then. The only problem we had, we have a town manager hired who does not want to move to Plainville and does not want to financially support this town, and I'm sure...
I'm going to cut you off there. No, I'm not going to let you get away with that one. You can disagree...
My opinion. Let me talk.
Even that, I think that crossed the line, John. I'm sorry.
It's the way it is.
According to you.
The people who drew up this charter had reasons to do this, and that was one of them, so that the town manager would be financially supporting this town also. And I'm sure they were wiser than anyone in this room. I'll talk about this more next meeting, because I have my next four meetings lined up with stuff that this council has been negligent in.
Again, John, I don't think we've been negligent. This was an issue that was...
That's your opinion, it's not mine.
Well, I'm just saying, this was something that was left over from the last council.
You're going to let me finish talking?
I'll give you a little extra time.
The last meeting that I spoke at, at a public hearing, I asked you why you were giving me three minutes at a public hearing. Now, the town calls for a public hearing, and you're going to limit people to three minutes. That's bogus. And you said, I asked you why, you said, because that's what I felt like. That's rude, and that's unprofessional, and I don't like it. And a lot of things that are happening in this town now that I don't like, and one of them was the vote of the people for 1,838 people who said that charter has to stay. The charter was there in a signed contract. The other thing, you turned Plainville into a part-time town with four days. Now, the other thing, we have people on this council that I believe belong to the Senior Center, and you actually voted to take away from our seniors. You have to be the only council in the state of Connecticut who would take away things from our seniors. That's terrible. And this has been all under your watch, Mr. Roserco, as chairman. Now, you're going to pick new chairman and assistant chair or vice chair. By what has been historically done, the high vote getter gets that position. You were not the high vote getter, and this is nothing personal, Chris, but you've been here so long, you're on your high horse, and you're not listening to the people. I would like to see this council put somebody else in as a new chairperson. We need change in this town, just like we need a change in our country. It's time for change, and you have to start listening to the people. You don't listen to the town manager. There's an organizational chart. It's the people, it's you, then the town manager, and the town attorney is even further down the line. And furthermore, the town attorney is from out of town, too. So what does he care about Plainville and what the people in Plainville go through? Come on, wake up, and let's do something for the people of this town.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Yes?
David James, 21 West Broad Street. On November 7th, Connecticut Deep held a public hearing about the medical waste incineration in Bristol, where members of the public were given three minutes to speak. My family was disappointed and appalled that no elected officials of the affected towns, including Plainville, were present in either an official or resident capacity. In fact, the hearing officer gave speaking priority to officials before opening it to the general public, yet not a single official that was there to make use of that time. And one of my main questions is, why was there no one on the council that was present on that meeting? I get that not every member could attend, but the hearing was known and on the record for quite a while. So why was it not planned ahead for at least one elected official to be there to represent Plainville? I also asked why wasn't the town manager, the assistant town manager, present to gather information. This is a prime example of why it's imperative that the town manager live in the town, so that issues like this affect him as well as his family and that he's fully invested in this town. We understand that the town council does oppose the ReWorld medical waste incineration as noted in the minutes and the resolution from October 21st, but I believe there was a letter that was supposed to be drafted as well, and since Connecticut Deep, I didn't see anything about that in the minutes. I was wondering where that went. If it has been sent, why wasn't the note made public, similar to what Southington did? And then the last thing is that the hearing on November 7th was the only public hearing that was going to be held. The fact that there were no elected officials there is very disturbing, and it's eye-opening and will factor prominently in how my family and I vote in future local elections.
Thank you.
Mr. James, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You were here before in regards to the...
Yes, yes. I've been to most meetings except for October 21st.
You live on either Redstone Hill or West Broad?
Uh, West Broad Street.
Yes, I was at your house, because I wanted to see if I could feel the vibration or hear the noise. And I got to tell you, I could not because of the time of day that I went there. There was a lot of traffic and a lot of background noise, something was going on.
Yep.
I also went to the woman's house in Southington, and I tried to feel the vibration there, and again, in that area, the traffic is so heavy at night, I mean, during the day, that you can't get a good feel for it. But I wanted you to know that we, as a representative of the council, did go to your house, and I also went to the house in Southington by Pratt and Whitney, I think.
Yeah. It's interesting that you brought that up. So the Public Health Department was charging or has been going after ReWorld for this. They have filed a motion basically going back against them. They, most recently, they withdrew that motion, saying, finally acknowledging that there was a noise, and they have been trying to do to fix that. But for me, that's just further proof that if they took that long to acknowledge that noise, a noise pollution is happening, I can't trust them with medical waste and burning that, and making sure that they are monitoring the things they need to monitor, and possibly going above what they are required to do by law to make sure that our community is safe.
But I will say this, Mr. James, had you told us about it, the meeting before your meeting, I think you would have had some of us coming down there. I got to be honest with you, I didn't know they had a meeting, number one. And number two, we did come out against the burning of medical waste.
Yep.
Just so you're aware of that.
No, no, I definitely saw the resolution that was put out there. The main thing that I remembered was that from previous meetings, there was talk about a letter being sent as well that kind of matches the tone from Southington. I believe the town manager even offered to help reword that a little bit if we needed to. So I was just wondering what the status of that was. It's a little late, because that should have been sent by, like, today at 5 o'clock, so...
It's already been sent.
It was sent, okay.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that letter has been sent.
Okay. Yeah, and then as far as knowing about the public hearing, it had been posted in the Plainville Talks Facebook group many times, and I know you're active there. I didn't come here and bring it up because I had other family things I needed to take care of, but I also kind of would expect the town council to kind of be watching that, because this is a major, major thing that is happening, not necessarily in our town, but that is going to directly affect our town in a negative way.
I agree.
I would just like to say, I was on the meeting. I was late, but I was not able to speak.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I mean, everybody that did speak from the public side spoke out against it.
Yeah.
The presentations that were given both by Connecticut Deep as well as ReWorld were lacking in any viable information.
Could not agree more.
Yeah, so, yes, okay, cool. Yeah. So, yes. Okay. Cool.
And I'm sure, I'm sure many of us were on the call.
Okay.
At the very least. The reason I didn't personally testify is because you do have a finite amount of time for public testimony. And since the town had already decided to send a letter, and I actually sent a personal letter on my behalf.
Yes.
I didn't want to take time away from someone else who hadn't had an opportunity to speak. So I can't speak for everybody. But I understand the frustration, and I, you know, I, just to let you know, we have followed through with the letter.
Okay.
Personally, I followed through with the letter. But for me, the reason is to give someone else a chance to speak, because we, we don't often get that opportunity.
Right.
Especially some private citizens, you know.
And it's, I, I think it's a, it was, it's more of a, a looks thing, like the-
No, you're right.
E- e- even if you didn't take the entire three minutes, just being able to say that you were part of, and if other, other Plainville residents were there, at least they would, they feel that the council has, has a back, I think that's a-
And I think based on the optics, yes. I think you're right. I, I completely understand what you're saying. And yes, maybe we could have done a better job.
Yeah. It's just, it's surprising how little I think people in this town know what's happening in-
You're probably right.
Um, we've done a lot of promotion for the Halloween dance that went on. And rightfully so, that's positive. I understand that. But this is something that can have dramatic effects for our community.
About public safety.
Both health and financially for, for housing and, and, and market values. So just being able to promote that, what would have been, would have been nice to see as well.
Well, thank you for the feedback.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else? Yes. Marilyn.
Not that tall. Marilyn Schreit, 18 Milford Street, Plainville. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
First of all, I have a question about the sidewalk on West Main Street in front of the main apartment property. And I'd like to know, why is it blocked right now? There's no construction going on.
You, you want me to answer that, or do you want to answer it?
Well, I, yeah.
I mean, there's debris coming off the building.
There was a, three large sections of, 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 of the facade that came off onto the sidewalk. So, and, you know, as, out of safety, we, we've fenced that off, and we're going through, looking at a structural analysis.
Okay. Is it going to be blocked during the whole renovation, or is this just a temporary?
It is not temporary at this point. To be determined.
Okay. And my second part, and maybe you can answer this. Maybe I'm supposed to do this through the chair, I'm not sure. But I would like to know if you have secured a real estate agent, and if you've been looking at any properties in Plainville yet.
Yes. Yes. Yes, and yes.
Okay. So your intent is to move to Plainville, Mr. Pawhouse?
Well, I don't really want to get into a debate, but I don't believe there's anything to be found at this point. I, the market is pretty, pretty bad.
Okay. Well, I've been wanting to ask you. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Same to you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Anyone else?
Tom Fode, 15 Bradley Street. First, unrelated to much of what's been talked about lately, I just wanted to say, the leaf pickup has been fantastic, as far as I'm concerned. Literally was, they showed up as I was getting leaves out to my front edge of my yard this weekend, and they took their time so that I could finish up with what I was doing. So, and they helped out. So, kudos to them, and my appreciation to them. The only thing, only thing else I wanted to say was, as, as far as the town attorney, sir, I thought you did an excellent explanation, that you weren't trying to say what the charter should say, just that it needs to be clearer about what it does say. And I found, I, I haven't had reason to believe you don't care about the town because you don't live in the town. So I thank you for your efforts. I don't want you thinking that we don't all, all of us feel the way, as some of our residents apparently do. And is, I guess that's really all I wanted to say. It seems, it seemed pretty clear what you were trying to get across for your point. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Anyone else? All right. We will close public comments. And before I open up old business, I do have to, a couple of things Mr. Kislik said. Regarding the senior center, there was the previous council, and I was part of that previous council. We made a decision with the senior center to close on Fridays. However, after feedback from the community, that was quickly changed, and the senior center continues to be open five days a week. So I just want to make it clear to everybody knows that was a process that was quickly rectified, is probably the wrong word. But once we got feedback from the community, we made a change and went back to the way it was. And it wasn't this council that did that, it was the previous council. And regarding the charter, you know, the charter's, you know, it's, it's a living body for the town. It's, it's not supposed to be static. I think you should constantly, I think it's imperative that we continue to look at it and make adjustments if we feel it's necessary. I think the point I wanted to make tonight is the town attorney's not recommending we get rid of the residency requirement. Nobody up here is recommending tonight that we get rid of the residency requirement. What we're saying is that there needs to be clarification in that particular section of the charter, and the town attorney is recommending that we appoint a charter revision to take a look at that and clarify, so we're not relying on amendments to employee contracts to define what the charter's trying to say. So I just wanted to make that point. And, and Mr. Kislik, you and I have disagreed certainly. I appreciate your feedback. I always appreciate your criticism. You know, it gives you and my mother something in common, so I am certainly used to that. So I, I do appreciate your comments. And I, and I don't mean, you know, it, you may have mentioned for me to get off my high horse. That's not the impression I'm trying to give you. And certainly, if, if you feel like that in the future, you know you can call me or stop me on the street when we see each other and, and give me your two cents. I certainly will listen. But just, you know, regarding the charter, before we get too far down the road, I just want to make it clear that there's just, right now, the way the document's written, there looks to be some clarification that needs to happen. And that's, I think, the direction the council's going to take unless someone says otherwise at this point. But, you know, I think from my perspective, you know, we're going to move slowly. We're not going to rush anything. You know, that's one of the things I think this council isn't going to rush into anything. So just from that perspective, I just wanted to get that, those couple of things clarified. So with that, we can now move to old business. We have our amendment to the plan of conservation and development, which we've been talking about for a few meetings now, right? It's, the good news is, I think, tonight, as you see in the motion, we've gotten to the point where we may be actually ready to take it off the table and take some action. So I'm going to ask for the first, if anyone cares to make a motion to take it off the table.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now that is back on the floor. I don't know if we want to have some discussion before we actually make a motion. Is there any questions? I don't know if there's any new information that needs to be shared before we, the council does something. There's, I mean, I know we've-
No, I mean-
We've kind of like, you know, I don't want to say we beat this to death, but I, I think we've done the right thing in taking our time, because we, it's clearly a complicated issue and, and making sure that we're understanding what we're doing here. So any council questions, comments?
Ready to make the motion.
If someone wants to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to endorse the 74 East Street proposed amendment to the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development with two recommended changes. A, remove the following text, and the text we're removing is "in light of the imminent demolition of its building due to functional obsolescence and decreased demand for office space." B, add the following text at the end. Historic preservation should be considered an integral part of any plans for the future development of 74 East Street.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. And once again, what we're doing here tonight is we're trying to amend our plan as concert, our plan of conservation and development. And by amending, with the motion you heard tonight, we were approving the amendment, but we're also including some language with regards to the significance that we feel as a council that the, the building holds in town, which we are well within our right to do. But just, it doesn't necessarily mean we can prevent anything from happening to the building. That is something that goes through, whether it's a permitting process through the, through Mark's office, or, you know, or actually, would it be the building official?
Right.
Or planning and zoning, if it's a, if it's a regulation issue. So, you know, tonight the council is just looking to amend the plan of conservation and development, and it would allow the owner of the property, if they so choose, to apply for what's called a PDD designation. And it's a, I'm going to look to my vice chair, a planned district-
No, planned-
Development District.
Yeah.
For those of you, I, I get those, the D's mixed up, but thank you. So any questions or comments from the council at this point? I know we've talked about it for about four meetings in a row now, but-
Okay. And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You know, as Chairperson Rosarco has said, what we're actually voting on tonight would be amendment that would make 74 East Street eligible to become a planned district, a development district, which in itself is a multi-step and really rather rigorous process. This just would make the site eligible, sort of a first, a first step. You know, I definitely support the motion, you know, that I made. I think that it's fine to, you know, endorse the amendment that would make the site eligible, but I think the two changes are absolutely necessary. And I think my rationale for that is looking at the plan of conservation and development itself, and seeing what it says in light of, in regard to historic preservation, and in regard to what the purpose of a planned district, a development district is. So on both of those things, I'll speak. On historic preservation, if you look in the, you know, the entire plan of conservation development, there is a whole separate section that's titled Preserve Historic Resources, and it clearly highlights the importance of identifying, protecting, and supporting efforts to preserve historic structures. Then, I think this is equally, if even not more compelling, on page 56, the plan addresses the purpose of a PDD. And it lists three things that a PDT should accomplish for the town. And one of these is that it should, and I'm going to quote, "result in a development that demonstrates a high regard for design and that is compatible with the historic, cultural, and geographic qualities of Plainville." And it's important to know that that exact statement exists not just in the plan of conservation and development, but also is found in section 3.05 of our zoning regulations, which I think gives it even, even more weight. So in essence, I think that if we are going to endorse the development, it should be with the two recommended changes in order that, you know, we pay attention to being consistent with the, with the plan. You know, and, you know, aside from that, I would also say that if we look at the data that came out of the town's marketing survey, and a lot of the recent comments from the public, I think it's safe to say that there's community support for us doing what we can and should do to protect our local history. But in conclusion, I'd like to publicly say one more time that the current owners have done, I think, an impressive job over the last 25 years of maintaining the building. It really looks very handsome. It looks very stately. And I sincerely hope that they will consider making preservation of the building a, a priority in their future plans.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else with any comments or questions? All right. Hearing nothing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you, everyone, for being patient. I know this didn't go as quickly as we probably all thought it should, but again, it's, you know, we'd rather be right than quick in some cases. So thank you, everyone, again, for the patience and all the information and all the questions answered. We do have a, a second item under old business. We will not be taking that off the table. Potentially at the next meeting, we will, we will take that up. So I will skip that for now, and we can move now to new business. And we have item number one under new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the following projects. A, fire department radios. B, municipal center furniture and improvements. And C, White Oak redevelopment project.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? You know, I do have a quick question I forgot to bring up after public comments. Technically, who owns that building? Is it Newport Realty? Or is it technically the town still owns it?
Town still owns it.
And I think that was, and I just, Mr. Rhett, just, my point was, it's really the town's responsibility still to, to maintain the building, or, you know, it's still under our purview. So that's part of the reason why you see the fencing is because we are responsible for making sure it's safe and making sure that people aren't in any danger of anything. So I just, I forgot to bring that up before. But thank you for clarifying that. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding a proposed amendment to chapter 374, Article 1, All Night Parking.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to waive the bid process and award bid 2025-13 Trash and Recycling Containers to Schaefer?
Sounds good.
Plastics, North American LLC, Charlotte, North Carolina, in the amount of $34,664.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tamkins.
Motion to award bid number 25, 2025-14 WPC forklift under Sourcewell contract number 091520-division2 Summit Handling Systems, Inc., North Haven, Connecticut, in the amount of $27,790.
Second.
All right. A motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to deny the Recreation and Park Advisory Board's request returning to Mary Sisson as recommended by the naming committee.
Second.
Motion in a second. I have a follow-up question. Is that worded correctly? Because their recommendation was to deny, so we're accepting, we are accepting their recommendation. We're not denying-
Motion to deny their, their request.
Am I reading it wrong, or is that, I'm-
Motion to deny.
Look to someone-
It's correct.
It's correct.
It's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because their recommendation request was-
Okay.
Was to remain half of doing it.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions, other than me? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Maranti.
A motion to approve the Pateroski Park Pond signage design and authorized postings as recommended by town staff.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Hurley.
Motion to elect, um, Christopher Rosarco is, is chairperson, and to elect-
Settle down.
That's right.
You could do it all at once.
You can do it, do it as one.
Yeah.
Rose, Rosemary, I forgot her last name.
Yeah, Maranti.
Maranti. As vice chairperson.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was wondering why you, you didn't do these separately, because based on some information that came to- some information that came to, um, me regarding your behavior on the night before election towards a board of ed member, um, I've decided not to, uh, vote affirmative for you as a chairperson. And, but Rosemary, I would. So, uh, do we want to separate those out or...
We can. I, I would have a follow-up question. What, uh, what information did you receive?
Um, that you were extremely aggressive towards a member of the board of ed and that her husband had to intercede on her behalf.
Would you like to see the video?
I, I...
Well, we're not, we're not going to show the, no, we're not going to do the video. No, I just was curious what was told.
Okay.
Um, because that's not what happened. Um, and I would say publicly that, that clearly is not what, what, what happened. Um, thank you for bringing it up though, because I do think it's, it's important to clarify and make sure that everybody's on the same page. And, um, yeah, we're not going to show the video tonight. We don't need to do that. But, um, if you want, I would ask that, if you want to, uh, I forgot, Councilman Hurley, if you want to just take your motion off the table, we'll...
Okay.
Do this separately if that's what, the way you want to go.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
I'll redo it.
And just do, I guess, the chairperson first.
To elect, it's the chairman, um...
Does he have to take the other one off?
Well, I think if it's just, if he agrees that he's going to withdraw his motion, that we can redo the motion.
Christopher Rosarco as chairperson.
Second.
All right. A motion in a second. Um, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yay.
All right. And item B.
To elect Rosemary Maranti as vice president.
Vice chairman, chairperson.
Oh, vice chairperson. I'm sorry.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, other discussions of interest.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to comment on, uh, some issue with the, um, letter that Aquarian had sent out regarding lead pipes or lead service. Uh, and I, I know there was some confusion. There were a number of calls that the office received and I'm sure the council members are, were receiving those calls as well. And, uh, you know, we're, we're working to assist, um, you know, individuals and callers that, that, that are inquiring, but essentially, uh, in a nutshell, you know, reading from their, um, you know, their press release from October twenty-eighth, uh, there was clearly, um, a movement, um, by EPA, uh, to, I guess, go the, the final, uh, the final piece in terms of getting to the, to the tap, so to speak, in, in the homes of, of eliminating lead or at least identifying, uh, potential lead services, right? So this is all about a, um, what they refer to as the EPA's lead and copper rule revision, the LCRR revisions that I guess, uh, you know, have heretofore consisted of just the, uh, service within the street up to the home and now going the last mile, so to speak, uh, in getting to the tap, looking at getting an inventory, uh, of, uh, those services and, uh, the, the service line inventory and asking, uh, people to commit to, uh, putting information into and responding to the survey. Um, doesn't necessarily mean that they have lead service. It just means that, uh, within this process, uh, that it is, um, uh, may contain unknown material. And, and so that's what, uh, this is all about. There was a second, uh, or the actual, this was their press release. Uh, we have, you know, the letter that was sent to homeowners. There are, uh, QR codes there that you can go, uh, to try and find out if, uh, you know, we, take, taking pictures and so forth on whether or not your service within your home is lead. And, um, one, uh, rule of thumb is that in, and again, this is not exact, but, uh, nineteen seventy-four, uh, you know, prohibited the, the use within houses of, of lead services. So, um, not likely, but, you know, again, you have to do the due diligence to take a look. Uh, but if anything built after seventy-four, unlikely to have, uh, lead service, but it could. And, and so I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying that it's a possib- ability, uh, but unlikely. And it, and just, it's, it's for each homeowner to, to take a look, um, at that. And then there's, uh, additional information all outlined in there. They're not saying that you, you have, it's just a, a process of getting now, uh, under this requirement for them to get an inventory of what may be out there in terms of this, what I call referred to as the last mile, the last piece in the, in the, the distribution within the lines. So that's what that's all about. We're happy to he- um, help anyone through that, that process. That still is unclear about what, what to do, but it, there's a lot of information in here about how to, uh, you know, try and prevent or, or take precautions, um, about reducing potential lead exposure, which is significant, is, is harmful. Um, but I think it's, it's an effort to, again, uh, finish, uh, the line, so to speak, go down the line right to the tap and, uh, understand where there might be lead and to replace that. So, um, sorry for the, you know, the public and, and, uh, any, you know, confusion that might have caused, but we're here to help if, if there's any, uh, additional questions or anything we can help with. We'd be happy to do that.
All right. Any, uh, follow-up questions or comments regarding the letter? All right. Um, at this point, we do have a couple, uh, matters for executive session. I don't anticipate us coming out of executive session for any votes. So I'll, I'll, uh, someone want to make a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll be in, uh, executive session for pending claims and potential land acquisitions. Uh, just before we sign off, I wish everyone on behalf of the council a happy Thanksgiving, whether you're with family, friends, or your favorite pet. I hope you enjoy the day and, um, we all get to slow down a little bit and enjoy what we have and give thanks for, uh, those around us. Thank you.
Thank you.